Everybody, I apologize. We had a tending business beforehand for an executive session, and it went a little over. Yeah, and it was for real estate purposes. Okay, start out the meeting. Tonight's the Thursday, March 21st, 2024. Just a reminder, our recording device will be used during the meeting. We're going to start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm going to start the meeting with public comment for agenda items and reminder of rules of conduct for public meetings established in Resolution 2008. The time allotted to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted at discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. Is there any public comment for agenda items? Seeing none.
Mr. Chairman, can we just leave the agenda for a couple moments so we can deal with the Three Creeks hearing?
Yep. So I'm going to turn it over to our solicitor, and we're going to have a continuance for the Three Creeks property.
Okay. This is the continued hearing of the conditional use application of Three Creeks LLC for their property on Bonsville Road. The hearing was continued this evening on the record. The applicant has requested another continuance of the hearing, and the Board is willing to grant that continuance. So the hearing will be continued until May 16th, 2024, and begin immediately after the Board of Supervisors meeting that evening. The board meeting starts at 6:30. So as soon as the board meeting's over, we'll take a small break and then proceed with the hearing if the applicant's ready then. Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Okay, so now we're going to open the meeting, the second part of the meeting, with minutes of previous for the March 7th, 2024 Board of Supervisors minute meeting. Meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, turn it over to the treasurer's report and authorization to pay bills. I think we all have.
I have actually reviewed the bills this afternoon, and I'm willing to and would like to make a motion that the treasurer's report and authorization to pay bills and approve the payroll.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Luke, I'm going to turn it over to you for the manager's report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Earlier this evening, as in just moments ago, the Board approved a payment to A.J. Blazinski in the amount of eighteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents. This payment was twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars less than the billing for the current period. This withholding is the contract sanction for non-collection of 131 trash stops for the period of January 6th through February 12th, 2024. Despite numerous notices, these stops were not collected until the following regular collection date on Tuesday, February 13th. The stops were located on Sugar Maple Square, Glory Maple Lane, Paper Bark Square, and Patterdale Place. East Brandywine Township is now in the fifth of a five-year contract with A.J. Blazinski. I value our past working relationship and look forward to a return to seamless service delivery. I appreciate that A.J. Blazinski is in a period of systematic review of their routes. The township cannot, however, accept that whole neighborhoods are missed for an entire week as ordinary growing pains. The contract allows for the withholding of payment equal to twenty-five dollars per day per missed stop. A reminder, the PSAT's Annual Conference will be April 14th through 17th in Hershey, Pennsylvania. Vice Chairman Croft and I are registered to attend. It is not too late for any additional members of the Board or staff to join us. Vice Chairman Croft was appointed by this Board at your annual organization meeting in January as the voting member for the association's business meeting. Attached to this report is a list of 2024 proposed resolutions. The PSAT's resolutions guide the association's advocacy on behalf of townships in Harrisburg. If you have comments upon review of these, please share those with Vice Chairman Croft so that he may vote accordingly. Beginning the last week of February, the township began transitioning our eBrandywine.org email addresses to a cloud-based Microsoft Exchange server. The upgrade was necessitated by security and delivery reliability issues with our old provider. This work is now complete. I'd like to thank our IT consultants, Custom Computer, for their work, and all of our volunteers with eBrandywine.org addresses, and all of our staff with eBrandywine.org addresses for their patience in the transition. The township hosted BBD LLC, the township's appointed auditor, at the township building the week of February 19th. The audit this year has been an all-hands-on-deck project as the audit season just happens to coincide with well-deserved family leave for our township treasurer. My thanks to all the staff who pitched in in a giant Easter egg hunt to hunt the necessary records. The 2023 municipal audit and financial report are due to the Department of Community and Economic Development on April 1st. At this Board's meeting on January 18th, Roadmaster Van Leeu reported that he was successful in obtaining four hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and forty dollars for the replacement of a culvert on Old Horseshoe Pike, which was damaged by Hurricane Ida in September of 2021. In your financial report of this evening, please note that ninety percent, or three hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars, has been received. That ninety percent represents FEMA's contribution. The remaining ten percent represents the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Association's contribution. At long last, a date is known for the delivery of the bathroom in Phase One of the community park. The green flush prefabricated bathroom will arrive on the week of April 15th. Briefly, on upcoming events, the second Spring Historical Commission Speaker Series presentation will be a talk about the Chester County during the Great Depression. That'll be April 21st at 3:30 PM, or 3:00 PM in this room. And the annual For the Parks Golf outing benefiting East Brandywine Township parks will be May 15th at 8:00 AM. Respectfully submitted, Township Manager Luke Revan.
Thank you. Do we have a, we don't need the building inspectors today, but we'll start with the roadmaster.
Thank you. Each year, the intermediate unit bids unleaded diesel and propane for school districts and municipalities. The contract is from August 1st, 2024, to July 31st of 2025. This year, the bids were two-twenty-nine for unleaded, which is thirteen cents less than the previous year. For diesel, it's two-seventy-nine, which is thirty-six less than last year, and propane is a dollar thirty-nine, which is three cents more than last year. Thanks to the intermediate for, intermediate unit for completing the bid process for fuel and other reasons. I'm glad to announce the completion of the Gas Boy project. This project included the replacement of the unleaded and diesel pumps, new piping, improved fuel tank gauges, and a new Gas Boy pedestal, which records fuel use. I also want to thank Sergeant Steve Tyree for his assistance with the project. The road department replaced the shingle roof on the maintenance garage at the community park, which I must say was not too soon because the existing roof was leaking in quite a few locations. They also had to replace about six sheets of plywood. I want to thank Derek, Kyle, and Jeremy for a job well done. That's our road department crew. We anticipate receiving our new 2024 Freightliner within a few weeks. I'm requesting permission from the Board to advertise the sale of our 2005 Freightliner. Thank you.
I think you just skipped the police duck.
Yeah, I did. The chief has that in his report.
Oh, gotcha. All right.
All right, so pertaining to the bid out for the, for the existing truck, I'm okay with that. I don't know, you guys have any feedback?
What bid out? I thought we already approved.
For, for getting, selling.
Oh, to sell the old one?
Yeah.
My only question was, I thought we were going to keep it as a reserved truck for a while.
We, we purchased a 2023, what is it, International, and that, that's, it's a, it's the same size like a 550, so it's one of the larger trucks, so.
All right, so you don't, so, all right, so this Freightliner is a second one.
Correct.
I mean, they've been on order for so long, I've lost track.
Yeah, about two and a half years.
I was, you ordered it before I was even the supervisor's. That's over two years. Okay. Then I will make a motion that we advertise the sale of the 2005 truck.
I'm assuming that's a missing bid?
Yes.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, chief.
Good evening. A couple of updates for the Board of Supervisors. One, the HVAC system that Matt mentioned. The repair to the HVAC system on the police department's side has been completed. I want to thank the contractor, Extreme Insulation, for the outstanding job they did over the couple days it took to complete the repairs. The workers were very professional and took care not to interfere with the PD operations or the work. I also want to acknowledge the road crew for all the hard work they did prepping the project prior to Extreme coming in, and for the work and the work because they had to order to replace all the light fixtures, ceiling tiles, et cetera, once the project was completed. They did a very professional job, and I thank them. During the last two weeks, officers have been completing training in the new Axon Body Warm Cam systems, which have now been placed into service. Coinciding with that project was the installation last week of the new Axon mobile video systems in our police vehicles. Both the mobile and the body warm camera systems are replacing the outdated WatchGuard systems that we had used for the last seven or eight years. Over the next month, we are also going to be completing training on the new Axon Taser 7 systems. That's going to replace the outdated units we have. I didn't want to put all this in writing, but what we have had, this system is amazing in the technology it provides us. It's all connected, the cars, the body cameras, we have holster triggers, taser triggers on the Tasers. Everything is connected Bluetooth. So anything that the officer does while he's either out on a footbeat, he's in a patrol car, anything, once emergency lights are activated, they have, they start to pull their weapon out, they start to pull the taser out. All of the cameras in both the cars and the body cam are activated. So we will always have video evidence recording of everything you officers are doing out there when they're dealing with public and the media. A special thank you to the Board of Supervisors, the Budget Committee. This was a very expensive project, but without their support and them providing the funding and approving it, this would not have been possible. So I want to thank you all. Monthly statistics for February, the department handled 2,505 events. We conducted 158 investigations. There were six criminal arrests, one summary arrest, one warrant arrest. We had no juvenile petitions for February. There were six traffic accidents investigated, 167 traffic citations were issued, 88 traffic warnings were issued, and officers logged 10,981 miles per hour. Training completed for the month, myself, Deputy Chief Yan Canich, and Sergeant Tyree. We attended the Axon Administrator Training. Officer Fox and Officer Capalo attended A-Ride, that is, the Advanced Roadside Compared Driving Enforcement Training, and Detective Fornish attended a one-week crime scene processing training at Deloitte Camp. We had one piece of correspondence that came from a resident named John Hoffman, and it was a thank you for our assistance with the C system. The attachments you have in the country investigations, the officer activity reports, and the correspondence.
Thank you.
Did, did you receive a new card or two? Okay.
No, we haven't received a new card.
Pardon me?
New police cards?
Yes.
No, sir, we have more.
All right, because I didn't notice the unmarked card until last week or so.
No, that's been here for a week.
Well, we're sneaking around now.
Yeah.
All right, Fire Company, please.
Good evening. East Brandywine Fire Company report for the month of February. We had eighty-two total incidents, thirty-one fire, fifty-one medical. We had eight fire calls in East Brandywine Township. We had eighteen medical calls in East Brandywine Township. We had average personnel responding to calls of fourteen, nineteen and a half for major incidents. We had five training sessions with 108 people in attendance. Some things to note, our ladder truck will be taking part in opening day with EBYA on April the 6th. Many of our members completed the second phase of our hazmat operations refresher course. We voted six new members into membership at our last company meeting, and I don't know if many of you saw it or not, but we, the only call of significance was the three vehicle accident in front of the fire station.
Highest turnout ever, huh?
Yes.
Thank you. And do we have ambulance report tonight?
Good evening. So for the month of February for Mink with EMS, total calls, we did 388. Out of that, broke it down into East Brandywine Township. We did eighteen here in East Brandywine, eight being ALS, ten being BLS. Traveled to Chester County twelve times, barely four. As far as ALS versus BLS transports, we did eight ALS, seven BLS, one, no services required, and one public assist. Dispatch times were pretty steady. They've kind of flattened out for us. About 1.8 minutes dispatched on route, the route's on scene 8.4. On scene to transport, 15.9. Transport to the hospital of their choice, 20.8, and a total call time of 77.4 minutes. Summertime's coming up, nicer weather's coming up, so we foresee the community outreach aspect of, of our EMS services expanding here. We offer CPR. We have a handful of CPR certified instructors, a handful of car seat technicians, so see, see some things coming on with the nicer weather, so.
Great. Thank you very much. All right, Jim, if you'd like to, for old business, Chester County, 250?
Good evening. As I'm sure you're all aware, 2026 is our nation's 250th anniversary. And with the national goal of being the largest and most inclusive celebration in U.S. history, 250 commissions have been formed at the national, state, and county levels. In 2022, the Chester County Commissioners appointed the America 250 PA Chester County Commission to kick off planning in Chester County. Chester County's 250, 250th overarching goal is to promote interactive, inclusive, and compelling experiences throughout 2026 to commemorate and celebrate the nation's 250th anniversary. The commemoration will extend through 2027 with the 250th anniversary of the Battle of the Brandywine and Philadelphia Campaign, all leading to Washington's subsequent encampment in Valley Forge. So as, as part of that, there, the, the county or the state commission is asking, or is looking for 100% participation of Pennsylvania cities, townships, and boroughs in supporting the celebration effort. So attached in your packet for tonight's meeting is a sample resolution. It's really a formality, just, just indicates that township's support of the America 250 PA Commission and their efforts to help the local municipalities celebrate the nation's birthday. It really is a formality because the township is already connected in the process through the Chester County Historic Preservation Network, of which I've been involved for over six years, and through the township's Historical Commission. But this would formally make us part of the process and, and provide a connection with the county as far as notices on what others are doing in the county, as well as promoting any programs that we would like to put into place to celebrate the birthday. So I asked you to consider passing that resolution. I'm not sure that's something you would do tonight since it's just a sample resolution, but perhaps at the, at the next public meeting.
Yeah, I would think if, as long as we've had time to read it, that'd be fine. Anything else?
No, that's.
Thank you very much. Thanks for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you.
Luke, I'll turn it over to you for the Bonsville Mill Award.
Right, if, if I may, on the preceding agenda item, should staff prepare, turn this model resolution into a East Brandywine Township resolution for your consideration at next meeting?
I would, I would think so, yes.
Okay, we will do so. All right, Agenda Item 7B, I'm sorry, 7A. This is a, included in your packet is a letter from Panoni, our township's engineer. It pertains to the award of a contract to build a parking lot at Bonsville Mill. Just to refresh everybody's memory, the township has grants from both the state and the county governments to do four phases of improvements at Bonsville Mill Park. Phase one was the removal of the concrete pad. That is complete. Phase two was the importing amended soils and hardscape work in the pad area. That is complete. Phase three was the purchase and installation of plants. That is ongoing. And phase four is the construction of a parking lot. In each of these phases, we've either used a CoStar's vendor or competitively bid the scope of the project. The phase four scope is the construction of a parking lot. This was advertised, and the bids were received on March 15th. We received a healthy number of bids. We've received eight. Panoni has done its diligence on the, on the apparent low bidder, which is John A. DeRocco General Contractors of Downingtown. Their bid was 103,926 dollars and 40 cents. At this time, I respectfully asked the Board of Supervisors to award the contract for parking lot improvements at Bonsville Mill to John A. DeRocco General Contractors of Downingtown, PA.
I'll make a motion to approve John A. DeRocco General Contractors to construct the parking lot at Bonsville Mill.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Sir Edwards, I'm going to bring you back up again.
Good evening.
Good evening.
In, on October 12th, the Chester County Commissioners enacted an ordinance, active volunteer real estate tax rebate. The Chester County Commissioners collectively got together and recognized that the need for volunteer firemen in the fire service is once again and has been declining, and how could they collectively help? And what they did was they enacted an ordinance that set forth a point system within the volunteer fire companies. If volunteer firemen were to obtain a certain level of points, they would be tax credited for 100%, 75%, 50%, 25%. The lists are compiled by the fire companies. They are notarized by notary public, turned into the tax office at Chester County, and the folks who are awarded the points system and stuff are given tax credits based on what they've achieved. At East Brandy, at East Brandywine Fire Company, we had 24 firefighters qualify for some sort of volunteer fireman relief through Chester County. Tonight, I come to the township meeting because from the Chester County Firemen's Association and the commissioners, they've asked that we bring it to township level to help that the townships also incur and say that volunteer firemen are doing the breed. Tonight, in the audience, you'll see a sampling of homeowners in the East Brandywine Township that volunteered at our fire company, and many of them are recognized by Chester County as receiving some percentage off on their Chester County tax rates. I spoke with Mr. Mulhern, the tax collector for East Brandywine, to try and give the three supervisors a figure that you would be looking at monetary-wise. And today, meeting with Dennis, well, not today, but as of today, the cost to the Chester, the Chester County, pardon me, the East Brandywine Township would be around $6,300. If we enacted the same point system, we followed the ordinance, and not to go off of Mr. Buck's house, but if we changed from Chester County Commissioners to East Brandywine Township supervisors and verbatim enacted the ordinance, you would be looking at about a $6,300 tax rebate to the volunteer firemen that are here. East Brandywine Fire Company would have 13 volunteer firefighters that currently qualify and live in East Brandywine Township. We also have other folks who live in the township that volunteer, but their level of activity didn't come to the threshold of getting a tax rebate. The whole idea is to try and again encourage volunteerism. An example of such that I just was looking at Exeter Township, they enacted a program, 100% municipal tax credit, 100% local earned income tax credit, $600 school tax credit. So all over PA, these tax credits are becoming more and more available for volunteerism within the fire service. Tonight, I included in your packets the ordinance that Chester County enacted, page by page, how they came awarding points, how the points were obtained. Points can be obtained by attending meetings, by serving on boards, responding to calls, attending trainings. The threshold level for 100% is 400 points. At two points apiece, you can imagine that that volunteer is very active within the fire department. The lowest threshold is 100 points. Again, still very active, but yet not at the 100% level. If you guys were to so enacted, at the most, you're looking at $10,000 with the folks we have. Now, it always comes to throw out and not throw out, but to point out that we're fortunate. County Township is now having three career firefighters. We don't have any at East Brandywine, but if we did incur the cost of a career firefighter, 13 firefighters at 80,000 a year would be just over a million dollars. Again, we have 30 to 40 active folks down there, 13 of which would qualify for East Brandywine. And I'm bringing it to you guys tonight. I was able to speak to you a couple of years earlier. I did want to talk to Dennis Mulhern to make sure that he understood the program. If you were to enact it, he does. He said it would not be a burden on him to be able to implement it, and these folks are here to support us tonight. And if you have any questions for me, I could try and answer them as best I can. If not, some of the folks in the audience might be able to help me answer them.
You guys run a fantastic organization. We, we did have the opportunity to talk about this. I'm in full support of it. I guess my only question is, and obviously we'll talk it over with the Board, but my only question is, I mean, we're, we're fortunate to have Carl, who's, who's also an accountant background, and run it by our solicitor on how the, how this gets written up, I guess is the other question, and how it gets worded. But do you guys have any questions or?
Yes, and I'm reading this, but let me ask the question. Real estate taxes in the model ordinance is not defined. So I'm assuming you're talking about the real estate taxes levied by the township in the general fund?
Yes, sir.
Not the fire service?
The, the property, yeah.
It would be property, real estate.
So the fire service is based on property also?
Fire service.
Yeah, yeah. Fire, well, we have, yes.
Fire, well, yes.
So I've.
Needs to be defined.
And that's why I was saying, full support, but it would.
Absolutely, but we need to define.
Which part are you looking at, Mr. Crolf? I'm sorry, I didn't follow.
We've done this in other municipalities, it's been enacted in other municipalities. I would say the ordinance that we prepared is quite not as complicated as this, so I'm familiar with the process. I think I even developed forms for the fire company.
Did you meet Mr. Boilerplate here? Pardon me, Mr. Boilerplate?
Occasionally.
I mean, I think, the policy is, but it's a great program, and we can define.
We just have to define, yeah, and that's the hard part.
Everything is clear.
So I guess.
I mean, as far as I'm concerned, it doesn't provide enough relief, but that's all the state allows, so.
Did you have any questions?
I don't. I'm in complete support.
So I guess what I was gonna say is, can you give us to the next morning meeting to try and figure out how?
Yeah, and I can sit down, I can work with Tom to come up with the.
I'm not willing to vote on it tonight without thinking about. Yeah, how to do it, you know, I'm full support of it, but, and I'm absolutely fine if you want to go through with Tom on trying to figure out.
Yeah, I mean, I can provide a loop, a sample from another township, and we can start.
I would say, I would say Assistant Chief Monastair is the one who compiles the point totals for us, and then gets them certified as we turn in to the tax collector, so we should keep the, when we develop it, we should keep the point system and everything exactly the same. I think that's just the way to do it.
I don't think that's our question.
Yeah, I didn't see, I asked you, I didn't know if you heard me.
Planning the taxes, what's a?
Right, sorry, forgive me to have the administrator perspective on this, is it, is it you pay your taxes, or your mortgage company pays the taxes and you make an application for a refund?
Correct.
Yes.
The taxes have to be paid.
Yes, we paid it, we paid our Chester County taxes, the Assistant Chief Monastair's gonna help me with this one, if you don't, if guys don't mind me calling up, good.
Have to pay the tax.
Good evening, Joe Monastair, eighteen, Lamy Way. Correct, right, you fully pay your taxes through your mortgage or your escrow, however you pay your taxes, and then it is rebated back to you by check back to your, like Chester County's direct deposit.
Correct.
It would be from the township in.
Actually, it'd be from the tax account.
Correct, yes.
Not the township.
There is some administrative burden on the tax collector.
Well, actually, I, my interpretation would be that the tax collector would collect the taxes, deposit them in the general fund, and then once a year, township staff would process thirteen checks for reimbursement. I could see, so it makes sense that the tax collector says this is no additional burden, because it isn't, he's collecting the full amount.
Of course, Dennis said no addition.
And I don't mean that, that came out perhaps a little snarky. The administrative, the administrative is gonna be on the township's treasurer, that's the person, and actually yourself, who is actually tracking all the hours, so you will be logging the hours, and we will be receiving the request for reimbursement and processing. I just wanted to make sure I understood, and I think what we're talking about is we have two real estate taxes. We have two point five mills for general purposes, and we have point five three oh mills for fire service. And the question is, does the rebate apply to both millages?
That.
They are two separate and distinct taxes.
Correct.
Based on the assessed, on the same assessed valuation.
Other municipalities are doing, because I'm sure others have had the fire tax as well.
Not too many, it's relatively a new thing.
It was released several years ago, I believe. We didn't want to support as a fire company initially, because of just the administrative burden, quite frankly, of that what we'd have to do from a reporting perspective. When the county came out, and I looked at the reporting that what we do from a state reporting level, it actually wasn't too much to assign points to every call, every meeting, all that stuff. So at the end of the year, I can put together a report that provides every person, everything they responded to, it's fully auditable, and then certified by the county, and that's what we're asking, is just using the same exact reporting that we're already providing to the county, nothing.
Same point system.
Same point system, I don't want to recreate.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's a question, we just need time, I mean, it's the fact that we're saying, and the county, the county can't and doesn't have a fire service tax.
Correct.
Right, is there, is there a movement to approach the school districts about theirs?
So within the county, there are conversations happening to approach the local school districts. There are other chiefs and other departments in, like Phoenixville, and so example that they're reaching out and trying to understand what the buy-in would be, would there be enough support at the school district level? But it started with the county and then local, and then there's potential to continue to the school districts.
I bring that up because in terms of millage, if you took the county at about four percent and the township at about three percent, and you added together, you'd have to take it times four to get at what, what the school district alone is, so I mean, if we're, if we're building value for this program, the school district's buy-in would be very important.
But I will say, you have a lot of complications, because you have, in the Downingtown School District alone, several townships that in fact have no fire companies. So who would qualify? If somebody lives in Upper New England and is a member of the Ludwig's Corner Fire Company, that's in Owen J. Roberts.
Correct.
So they wouldn't really benefit unless Owen J. Roberts.
They would probably prorate it, I would assume, but, but I guess.
Let us talk with our solicitor who.
And so I guess my only question is, first I even heard of it, first of all, I think it's a fantastic idea, where was this years ago, right? But where, who, the commissioners talked about it at your dinner.
Yes.
Where, was it originated by the commissioners, or was this something that was from another state, you guys just got?
No, it's authorized by a state law. The General Assembly passed a law off.
But were we like behind the eight ball, was this something that, yeah, that's what I thought.
Like I said, I don't know the exact date, but several years ago, this was enacted by the state. And it was up to the townships to adopt this and put it into action, and it wasn't done at the time.
It was, it was in two thousand sixteen, and it was amended in two thousand twenty, so it's been around a long time.
Well, as you see, you have our support, just give us to the next meeting to try and figure out the crux and how we're getting it established.
Well, thank you, if you have any questions, let us know, we'll happy to help.
Very much.
Very good. Thank you.
Luke, I'll turn it back over to you again for the Resolution Three of twenty twenty-four.
All right, so the township routinely has a bit of churn in our volunteers, and we usually have agenda items, accepting so-and-so's resolution.
As you guys don't have to stick around for this, thank you so much for coming in.
Unless you want to.
Thank you very much.
So we have some, just organic turnover on various boards and committees at the township. What's a little different about the zoning hearing board is that our code calls, or the MPC calls, for appointments to the zoning hearing board to be done by resolution. So included in your packet this evening is Resolution Number Three of twenty twenty-four. This resolution would appoint, sorry, am I reading the right one?
Sandy Moser.
Yeah, okay, would report Sandy Mosers to fill the term of Nicole Hatton. That term would expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, so it would be to fill a vacancy on the zoning hearing board.
You looking for a motion?
I'm looking for a motion to pass Resolution Three of twenty twenty-four, sorry, that was very poorly presented.
It's, it is confusing, I kept looking for Sandy's name, and it's in the fourth paragraph.
Well, I was thinking it was someone else.
All right, I'll make a motion to appoint Sandy Moser to fill the unexpired term of Nicole Hatton to the zoning hearing board.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
And then Luke, you might as well just keep.
Yeah, well, let me, let me, let me first confess my confusion, did we previously appoint Becky Corbin from the alternate to the full? So that's already been done, the reason for my confusion is I kept looking for Becky Corbin's name, that was done previously, my apologies. So the next resolution is very similar, however, it's an appointment as an alternate to fill the vacancy left by the promotion of Becky Corbin to the zoning hearing board. So Resolution Four of twenty twenty-four would appoint Lisa Conklin to the zoning hearing board as an alternate member for a term that expires December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. I would respectfully ask the Board of Supervisors.
I'll make a motion to, to appoint Lisa Conklin to the zoning hearing board as an alternative member.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Luke, just keep on going.
All right, so the next resolution, Resolution Five of twenty twenty-four, apologies, there is a typo on the cover of that, we will get that corrected. The Board of Supervisors recently adopted an ordinance which amended the landscaping requirements in the Chapter three fifty, our subdivision and land development code. That ordinance included the language that specified that developers were to see a recommended plant list, which could be adopted from time to time as a resolution by the Board of Supervisors. The idea was to have by ordinance specifying how many plants you need to have, but by resolution specifying which plants would be acceptable. The idea being that this is a list that might need frequent amendment, and it is easier to pass a resolution than an ordinance. So before you this evening is exactly that plant list, this is the suggested plant materials referenced in our new landscaping ordinance. It was prepared by and recommended due pass by the Planning Commission, so at this time, I'd respectfully ask the Board of Supervisors to adopt Resolution Five of twenty twenty-four.
And what was the typo, so we don't? Oh, we had the date of twenty-three up here.
Yeah, I just realized I put twenty twenty, so we'll fix that.
I'll make a motion.
It's been hanging around that long.
You couldn't resist.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Five of twenty twenty-four.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Luke?
The days of just being green and half a flowered oak count anymore.
All right, we're being very productive here. Previously, the Board of Supervisors authorized staff to send a draft ordinance pertaining to trail surfaces that are allowed, again, in our Chapter three fifty subdivision and land development ordinance, to Chester County for an Act two forty-seven review. We have received a response from the county, which is included in your packet. Also included in your packet is an exhibit that would be part of the new ordinance and the redlined version of the code that would be turned into the form of an ordinance for the board's consideration. The action item for this evening is, at the board's discretion, directing staff and the solicitor to put this material in the form of an ordinance and to advertise it for adoption at a future meeting. Similar to the last item, we have a recommendation from the Planning Commission to do so.
Make a, make a motion, make a motion to adopt, to, permission to advertise the ordinance for adoption.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Last but not least, Luke.
At a previous Board of Supervisors meeting, staff was directed to refer a resolution amending the, an ordinance amending the required parking spaces for restaurants to the county for Act two forty-seven review. On March twelfth, we received that response. Similar to the last agenda item, my ask of the board would be to direct staff and the solicitor to put this in the form of an ordinance and advertise it for adoption at a future Board of Supervisors meeting.
A motion to refer.
It's already been.
I make a motion to, to take the parking and, the parking changes.
How would you word this?
Well.
Authorized.
The advertisement.
Right, advertisement.
Advertisement of our restaurant parking revisions.
And I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, do we have any public on comment, or do we have any public comment on non-agenda Seeing none, notices, the board did meet with, for an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss real estate matters, and the board will continue at the conclusion of this meeting to have an executive session to finish the discussions. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.